I guess we can call this meeting to order at 6:40. Okay, we'll start off with agenda amendments, which we have one.
Yes, I completely forgot. Carol Wazott is going to all of the local school boards this month to do presentations for boards on after-school programming. The 21st Century Grant that is a federal grant that supports a large section of our after-school programming is up for renewal and part of the process is ensuring we get a commitment from our local school boards that we want to continue to support and to give information. So Carol, I'm gonna unhook again and let you introduce yourself and bring up your presentation.
And that's our only agenda amendment there?
As far as I know, it is, yes. So while you get, I think after your public comments part would make sense.
I just got a little something that I want during the principal's report.
Something during the principal's report?
Yeah.
Can you be a little more specific or?
What's that?
Can you be a little more specific?
Well, it's about rugs.
Okay, rugs during principal's report.
Yep. I didn't want to be all nervous, you know, I'd be quiet.
I'm relieved it's just rugs.
I think that's, oh, and the Velco representative, I met with him briefly and talked about where we were and that we weren't ready to sign an agreement and I'll be happy to give that update, but I told him, so he went home.
Okay.
I thought that's what that was.
So move on to public comments?
I am here because I'm trying to absorb information about the district because I am running for state rep, but it's part of my education. I'm Charlotte Fard and at some point I actually would like to hear from the school board if you have time about the feelings that are in this community about Act 46.
You got some time?
I do.
Oh, boy. That's a sore subject in this town. Not quite as sore as Franklin, but close. Okay, no other public comments?
Yes. I live, I'm the neighbor over here and I got a tree that's not in very good shape and half of it's coming over the fence. And I got a couple quotes and it was a couple different options to do it. My side's pretty much taken care of, but to do your side, he has to have like the playground closed down, but he only works on the weekends.
That actually works better for us. That's because I would think we can get access pretty easily for the weekend for you. It'd be a matter of getting somebody to, because there's a, because you're right over here, right?
Where are we? Middle Russia's on there.
Yeah, right over here.
Okay.
So I'm pretty sure there's a gate right there that we'd have, not to get struck through, right?
Yeah, there's a gate right there.
Sure, the weekend works great, we can make that work.
So who do I get to hold up?
I would say Terry. Terry Brace is our Buildings and Grounds Coordinator, the Director, and coordinated through him and he would be the one to open the gate for you. He's here during the week, during the day. And if you want, we can get you his phone number too.
I see him all the time, I can.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Anybody else have, I mean, I don't have an issue with him on the weekend, anybody else?
You're okay with any weekends fine or figure that out when the time comes?
I would say as long as it's not like today where it's pouring rain, we just don't want to tear up the lawn, that kind of thing. But other than that, I don't, I don't see an issue with weekends.
Because I thought, I think Ty said that this would be the last weekend for the soccer game.
Yep.
Yeah, and then after that, we just recess on the playground, we don't use it on the weekends.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
That was easy. All right, on to Carol's presentation.
Okay, so my name is Carol Wazott and I've been with the program since its start. Yeah, sure. I wanted to give you some insight on how long, on the program, what we've had. We started with the 2005, 2006 school year and take one of each of those. One of each of those. And we started initially for just middle school, basically grades five through nine and the idea was for a safe place for the kids to go.
Like in the whole thing, one each or one of each?
Yeah, also substance abuse. And we had the program running. And Sheldon, which actually came on with a grant in 2004, 2005, running under the town of Sheldon, they were running into some difficulties and they asked if the SU could take on that program. So in 2007, 2008, Aspen became part of our programs. In 2008, 2009, we found that we wanted to reach out to the high school students and have something for the high school students as well as for the younger students from grades two through four. So we wrote a grant there and were awarded that grant as well. These are five-year grants. In 2009, we did a consolidation of all the grants so they were all gonna be due the same five-year period kind of thing. And in 2014, 2019, we reapplied for all the programs and we were awarded and we are now in our last year. Over the years, this is our total participation. Things change, you know, some years we have the sports, we work well with the sports where they'll join us after and then some years with coaches' schedules, we don't end up with sports kids joining our program. So the numbers fluctuate as you go across the years and also we added programs at different points as well. Okay, so this last year, 905 students in Franklin Northwest Supervisory Union have participated in our program, which is great considering we have about 2,000 students. The way it's funded is the 21, the 21st Century Community Learning Center's program grant is they will pay half, they will match half with the program costs. So we're looking at an $800,000 budget, the program budget that we have for this program. $423,000 is paid by the 21st Century Learning Community Centers grant. That bottom chunk there, that purple on the bottom, the $88,000, that is the snack and meals reimbursement program from Vermont Agency of Education's Child Nutrition Programs. That is considered a program component and in that we get the grant matched to that as well. So these are all program expenses. That, the one that's at three o'clock, the green one, that's $71,000, that is the Consolidated Funds Grant, which is our Team Northwest Tutoring. They provide tutoring under our umbrella after school and during the summer. And again, that's other funds that we're getting a match for in the 21C dollars. Okay? So they will, the 21C grant matches the local funds. Okay? So that includes the nutrition programs, that includes our Team Northwest Tutoring. Also in there, like four o'clock, it's the school in-kind. That's another little bucket that is a nice one in that particularly this is present at the Sheldon School. Their parents, their students are dismissed at 2:45. Paraeducators are on, under contract till 3:15 there. So what happens there is if the teacher doesn't need that paraeducator during that time, those paraeducators go to the after-school program in Sheldon and they work from 2:45 to 3:15 where they are in-kind because the school's paying them, the after-school program doesn't pay them. So that is another way to reduce the other local match need, which comes primarily from school budgets. Okay? Any questions on that? Okay, so those handouts that I just went around, I don't know if everybody got one of those, but looking at this one. Did you get one of these?
Yeah.
So this is showing, this is a sample of our programs for each one of the school sites and goes on the back as well. And this is a sample of what the programs look like every day. This is like our spring, our end-of-year session for the 2017, '18 and it shows you the averages of how many per day, the kinds of classes there are. And then at the bottom in that pink zone, it's, it shows the average daily attendance for Highgate. We've got Highgate Crossroads, which is grades four, five, six. And then there's also another column, Highgate Crossroads Explorers, which is grades two and three. So you can see the average daily attendance for Crossroads is 32 students every day and for the Explorers, it's 17, 18 per day. You'll see for Crossroads, that's grades four, five, six, we have 79% attending the Crossroads program out of that student population, grades four, five, six. For the Explorers, we have zero. All right, so what's going on with this is we have a FileMaker attendance tracking software and everybody's in one. So that number down there, the target grades attending, percent attending, that's out of grades two through six. So sorry about that. So 79% of student population, grades two through six, are attending the after-school program. Okay? Also in the packet, there's this. This one? This one gives you an overview of the program. It shows we have a vision, a mission, and the goals that we are committed to, we have committed through our grant application to be targeted. And it's improve school day performance, improve school day attendance, improve overall health and physical well-being, improve the level of self-esteem and social well-being, encourage participants to learn new skills and gain confidence, to problem solve, to try new things, and to become a responsible citizen of the local and global community. Six, increase student access to, experience of, and inquiry into scheme that your science, technology, engineering, art, mathematics, activities, and opportunities. The 21st Century Community Learning Centers grant is only given to communities that have 40% and higher free reduced lunch as a way for income, you're income eligible. So the goal is to equalize opportunities to all students in Vermont. Okay? So annually, we report to the Agency of Education in Vermont and also there's a federal data reports that we also report on. So this is every year, linkages to the school day, high-quality staff, regular attendees. A regular attendee is a student who attends 30 days or more or 60 hours or more. And the research has shown that students who are regular attendees, that we can have a real impact on their school day performance, whether they are attending school every day, that kind of stuff. So that's what regular attendees are. Flexible structures, student choice, community partnerships. Right now, I'm feeling out additional community partners. That's, that's one thing they look at as the program being sustainable if you have others with a vested interest in the program. So our programs go Monday through Thursday during the school year. We don't do Fridays because we had issues with staff, not having staff want to work and kids not showing up. So our program is written from Monday through Thursday. The state of Vermont wants five days a week, but we've been able to stay with our four days. So what I'm doing is I'm approaching the library. I already met with the Highgate Public Library and I'm saying to them allowable funds for the 21st Century Grant, one of them is to expand library service hours. So approaching them to say, would you consider having a 3:00 to 6:00 PM block on Fridays? And so that children can come to your facility and then parents would pick them up or whatever and that would be their program. And the way that would work is they would be written into the grant to provide Friday, open library hours to serve our children and then that would do, that would give us the five days in our grant. We wouldn't be paying for that. The library pays for it, pays for half and the grant would pay the other half. So this supports them as well. So, so that's something I'm working on. I'm gonna talk to the rec departments too and see if there's something they want to do there as well. Okay? So I have, some of the other information I have is why after-school and there's inspiring learners, helping working families, keeping kids safe and healthy, supporting Vermont's vision for education, being like flexible pathways, that kind of stuff. By exploring different activities and experiences during the after-school program, students can potentially have a better feel for what kind of career they want to go into and stuff. I know a lot of students participated in the MBU Theater Arts Summer Camp for the summer and that's another one that shows.
It was a huge hit.
Yes, yeah, it was very good. Okay, so the other thing I gave out were some of the flyers. I gave the fall flyers for the Crossroads and for the Crossroads Explorers and you can look at that. I have a quick video I'd like to show. I made this video for our 10th anniversary because right now Crossroads is coming into its 13th year. So let's. We're gonna, we're hoping the speakers work.
Click recommended settings.
Recommended settings. All right, so the speakers are on, they're plugged in. And I'm just gonna make sure we're up. That's up, that's up. Maybe I'll take the speakers down.
I'm not sure if I'm gonna create any loud buzzing sound or anything.
No, I don't know. Thought we solved this problem.
I know.
Are those the speakers, are you, are you pointing to those speakers?
Yeah, I've got those, I was gonna try to bypass it. It's the power. All right. Speaker out. Your speaker out. Oh, I got that one. All right, well, we just won't have music, that's all. We said to go to Control Panel, go to Sound. Come on. That would be it. That would be it. All right, let's try one more time. Sometimes if you right-click on the speaker and do test, it like wakes things up. At least my laptop does that. That's the one. Mute. All right. All right. Let's do that. All right. It's not people talking, it's just, it's music that makes it more pleasant to see the children.
So here's the pictures through the years and I, when I made this going through all these pictures, I saw like kids babying pictures through the years, which was pretty impressive. And these programs have been successful primarily because we have some awesome site coordinators. Highgate has been super fortunate to have Joyce Ashton, who started with the program just like me. So she's been with the program the whole 13 years and it really helps having experienced site coordinator who's attended all the trainings through the years. And Vermont After School and the 21st Century Community Learning Centers Program Director through the Agency of Education. We have required trainings multiple times during the year and there's a huge network of, there's over 140 after-school sites that are funded by 21st Century Community Learning Centers grants. It's a competitive process, so the application is pretty intense and my advisory board and I will be meeting on Monday to start working on that application.
I noticed there was even a training that they have at the Agency of Ed to help people through that application process.
Yes, yes, and it's sort of required, so I'm gonna be there next week.
Carol, what do you need from the board?
Well, at this point, we're looking to find out, do you want to continue with the program? Because I gotta start writing that grant, we're working on that grant now. Be meeting with the school principals as well to find out what we can do to support or have greater school day linkages as well. So, but I need to know that we have the continued support for the program because there is a portion of the, there is some funds that do come from the school budget for this program. But as you can see from that pie chart, we're leveraging a lot of funds with our piece.
Very little of it comes from a local line item in budget. You've got in-kind support, you have Medicaid funds, you have other kinds of federal money besides the consolidated federal grant as well. It's really amazing, so many times when they say they want a match, they want it to be local and this, this program allows you to leverage so many other funding sources and the benefits to children for extended school day. It's really impactful.
Could I just inject that despite my contributions, this program is incredibly successful. It's amazing to have this opportunity for kids. It's typically not something principals get overly involved in. Occasionally we do, but just knowing what a lot of the kids would be going home to instead of two hours of some enriching type activities is amazing. So, you know, Carol handles a lot of the administrative end and she, you know, is getting used to me not being so responsive about meeting and stuff, but she does a tremendous job making sure all the Ts are crossed and the Is dotted and Joyce is on the ground, you know. Having somebody that's been with the program as long as she has, so many things they take care of that I think would probably fall on our plate somewhere for such a worthwhile program that we would want to keep it going and we would end up doing more. But between the two of them, they have such experience with it that it virtually runs itself from an administrative perspective. It doesn't run itself for them. They put in incredible amount of work. And hiring staff for really short periods of time is a challenge. Anyway, so it's just, I can't say enough. It's like the summer program. Just what would be, what would the kids, what would many of these kids be doing if they didn't have this opportunity? So I just, I can't say enough good things about it. And if there was music, you'd be in tears right now.
As a parent, I appreciate this program a lot. All three of my children have gone through the program here at Highgate and now two of my children are participating in the program at MBU and it's great that they pick and choose the things they want to do and more times than not, they find something they want to do and they love it.
I agree, I'm a second grader and she's, she really loves it.
Okay, so that is it.
Any other questions for Carol? Did you need a motion of support?
Well, you know, that would be helpful that because, just so I know and so as we define the program, we know that we're gonna have the Highgate School included in this as well. There's a lot of shared expenses. The more we have, it's like our busing is shared with MBU's programs. So the professional development training and stuff. When we originally wrote the grant, the state, I only had like $3,000 for professional development and the state directors. Well, I think for a program your size, you should have $10,000, so I'm gonna give you $7,000 as part of the grant. So they gave us additional, you saw that, that $423. It wasn't $400,000, it's $423. So he gave us extra money for professional development. So, and that's all in our main budget and then that cost gets shared across the sites, kind of stuff. So, anyway.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to support the Highgate Crossroads program.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those, huh?
Is there a amount that we're gonna, you know, you say support it?
It's a general support. We're not talking about particular dollar amount in this. Just do we support the existence of the program?
Right, yeah, come December, I should have the grant worked up. Now, this is, lights on, we do this every October nationally. Over 8,000 21C sites are having like an open house. So this is a listing of all the open houses that we're doing with the Crossroads program and you can see that Highgate will be doing theirs on Thursday, October 25th. So if you're available, you can stop by and see all of the programs, kids doing activities.
Okay, all those in favor to support the Crossroads program in Highgate? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, hides them. Motion carries, bides over. Thank you very much, Carol.
Alright, you're welcome, thank you.
Uh, let's see, possible topics for future board meeting.
Well, we'll need the Velco again.
Yep, Velco for next month. I would imagine we'll probably be able to close out the roof discussion next month too, because they are closing in quickly on finishing it. I'm sure there'll be a lot more Act Forty-Six discussion next month.
And budget.
And budget, big time budget talk. And probably talk about the bonds more.
So not much?
No, simple, easy. Any other possible topics? Okay, uh, next, Highgate Board Meeting is November eighth at six-thirty here in the library. And the next Franklin Northwest Supervisor Union is November seventh at six-thirty in Franklin's, the school library. Onto the consent agenda, we'll accept a motion to adopt the separate September thirteenth and September twenty-seventh Special Board Meeting minutes.
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, bides over. Alright, we're on to Principal's Report.
This is gonna hand this out.
Yep, I got it.
And have. While he's doing that, I will, I don't know. Begin. And I'm just gonna, Chris's got a couple areas he's gonna cover, and I'm just gonna mention a couple of things. We've had some great success with Math Menu, which I think is gonna be on page two. Math Menu is a way in which to teach math that offers kids, it's a combination of offering kids choice, but also addressing their needs. So, just like, just as the name implies, a menu, so kids get to pick certain activities. And from those of you not too, too far back in school years, you may remember stations where your teacher, what it has different stations set up, you'd rotate. Math Menu operates a little bit like that, but the stations are a little planned, a little bit more intentionally, targeting kids with, when they're not getting to choose the activity they want, then they are placed in an activity where they need that help. So, and then the third component of it is actual conferencing with the ma, with the teacher. So, there are some days where I might go in and be able to choose something that I want to work on, there might be a day that there's something I have no choice. I've got a, this is what the teacher has said, you're at this station because that's the area that you're in need. And then there could be a third place where it is, you're meeting with me today. So we've had a guy named Christian, and I'm just gonna say.
Cordemarch.
Is it Cordemarch? Uh, who has been one of the best consultants I think we've ever gotten involved with. He's been with us, he came, he was with us last June, he was back in August, he came a few weeks ago. And he'll be back one more day, assuming that we get our Election Day business taken care of tomorrow, and we'll give you a little update on that. But, and he'll be back, but he is just, he's been engaging, he meets with the entire staff, he meets with individual teams at grade levels. You know, he's quick, he's funny, and he's knowledgeable. So all those components that command a teacher's respect is great. And so he's been, he's been absolutely fabulous. So, most grade levels are, have it implemented and up and running, some grade levels are still working on implementing it. But he's kind of working with each grade level on their own, and helping them where he thinks that they need most help. But it's been, it's been a big hit, and I was just in a fifth grade class with Ms. Tully the other day, and took pictures and video because it was just, every kid was engaged, every kid was learning something. And it's just, it's just a nice, a nice program of individualizing instruction for kids, but also giving that element of choice, which they really enjoy as well. So, that continues, we'll have, as I said, we'll have them back one more day in November. Spelling Bee Team, you probably already have heard, had a great, come-from-behind win over Franklin. And second year in a row that it's played out that way. And as I said in here, Kelly Enterline just does such an amazing job with these kids, and hosting it as well. So I don't know if any of you were able to see it or participate, not participate, but to observe. It's intense, spelling bees are like having your kid on the foul line with the game tied, and, you know, down by a point. Every time they get up to spell, it's just them. And, you know, and as a parent, you know, or an adult, you're feeling torn because you don't want the other kids to get them wrong, but if they get it wrong, then your kid's team is gonna gain. So it's really a pretty intense type of competition. And our kids just responded well. We had, we were missing one of our students who is a really, really good speller, who was not here that day, and so that was the, they wanted to win it for him, and to give him an opportunity to rejoin the team for the regionals, which will be, I think, somewhere down in San Albans. But just a great, a really good feeling for the school to have that win again, second year in a row. And then the only thing I was gonna add, and I forgot to add, was we had our series of open houses again, and this is now the third? Second or third year, second year that we've done open houses by grade level. So instead of one open house, we've had, last year, seven different ones, this year, we grouped them into, you know, into two grade levels, so we weren't, so Chris and I weren't out, you know, seven nights in a two-week span or three-week span. We're still trying to find our way a little bit, they've been, I still say they're far better than the big, you know, four hundred people showing up and wandering through the school, but not really learning much about the school, just kind of wandering. So this, these were really good about, again, the grade levels, teaching parents how their kids are being taught. So, that's great, but we still have some parents that have felt with some feedback that with our August Parent Conferences, they still feel it's a little bit repetitive. Like, I've already been to the room, I've already met the teacher, I already know how things work. So, what you're probably gonna see next year is a switch over to our Math and Literacy Nights, which have always kind of perplexed me a little bit, that in any school I've ever been in, the Math and Literacy Celebration Nights are towards the end of the year. When, I'd like to see them moved now to the beginning of the year. The problem is, if you call them Math and Literacy Nights, your attendance plummets. If you call it an open house, it's a big party and you get lots of people. So, we've got to find a way of making those Math and Literacy Nights reflect our open house popularity. And so Jen Hubbard, our math coach and specialist, and Ed Dianico, our literacy coach and specialist, they do get grant money to put on those nights, so we're really looking at what other schools have done. Other schools have not done it early in the year, that would be new. But I think if we really want for parents to know how we teach their children, math and literacy especially, that would be the night to do it. But the real key is to have some, and I, you know, I'll just say it, just big prizes, you know? Because they usually do give away like a Kindle, but, you know, if you're giving away an iPad, and you're really promoting it for students to bring to parents, I think we might be able to turn something around on Math and Literacy Nights, and offer them in September instead of open houses, and have parents walk away with a better understanding of what they can do at home to help their kids with math, and what they can do at home to help their kids with literacy. Or maybe even science by next year, that, you know, we include some real cool science things. So, so I think that's gonna be the next iteration of open house. But, you know, more, more to follow on that. I just think that what we've been doing is much better than any open house I've ever been part of. But I'm always, of course, as you know, we're looking to get better each time, and those August Parent Conferences really have changed the way we look at parent involvement. So, anyway, but they were great. And I don't know, I know you had, it was on the Board Meeting Night, I think, that you had yours for fifth grade. So, most people had wonderful things to say, but again, I'm still looking for more takeaway for parents on how we do things.
I think the two are close together, meeting before the school, and then just within a couple of months, we're back at it again, and we still don't, you know, we're still learning what the kids are going through during the day, I just thought they were close together.
Yeah.
Unlike we were just there.
Yeah, yeah, and we heard that, yeah, we heard that more than, more than once. So, we're gonna work on it, and see what we can, what we can do with the Math and Literacy, make it seem real different. Great turnout, yeah, we had some great turnout.
I'll add to that, we have a Math and Literacy Night Task Team beginning some work next Wednesday. And that's gonna be their, pretty much their sole focus for six or eight weeks, to figure out how to, how to make that night awesome, and get people in the building. So, we're putting a pretty, pretty high premium, and we're using some faculty meeting time to get, for those people to get that work done, so. Alright, I'm just gonna do one thing, it's the first page, can everyone just look at the first page of the Principal's Report, please? Since Ma, March of last year, I've been working with five other Highgate educators, teachers, and one para educator, to get a proposal ready for the School Board in December. So that's a possible agenda topic in December, to create a makerspace at Highgate School for next school year. So we started last March with the idea of about eighteen months' worth of planning to get a makerspace ready for September of 2019. I think I can say with confidence, we've gone about this the right way. I've seen some good makerspaces, and I've seen some spaces that are just a room with some stuff in it, and that doesn't get used. And I went with Ethan Couture, our tech guy, and Kelly Enterline, our librarian, to a one-week course this summer on designing makerspaces and making them impact student learning, rather than just being there and looking cool. So, that was really useful. We, the, the main thing that I want to say tonight is that I'd like to offer the opportunity for School Board members to go on a little field trip with us to Fairfax. They have a, what in my opinion is the best makerspace in Franklin County for sure, and I would even say probably Franklin and Chittenden Counties. They have been at it for a few years, they have separate makerspaces in their elementary, middle, and high schools. They have Innovation Days every Monday in their elementary school, and I've talked with Rhonda Siemens, who's the person who runs the makerspaces down there. And she's given me seven different dates, they're all Mondays, and I would love any School Board members who would like to go, to come see it. Because seeing is believing with this kind of stuff. I can describe it all day, and I certainly will in December, but I went once, and it was like, wow, we gotta get our kids doing this. It definitely, maximum engagement for some kids who don't, aren't typically engaged in school. So, I'm gonna send you all, do you all access your Board email, your School Board email? Okay, I'm gonna send you all those seven dates. I would love if you could reply all, if you're, if you have a date or dates that work for you. The earlier the better, because we are gonna try to present to you all in December about our proposal. But it's, it's something I'm really excited about, and I think it can really impact student engagement for both science and other subjects, it's not just science. So way more to come on that, but check your email this week, because I will be sending you those dates. That's it for me.
Uh, any other discussion? Oh, uh, Richard and Ruggs for Principal's Report.
Yeah. I was in here last night roaming around. See, and I come across a fourth-grade room over here, it told me the ladies, I can't say it very good.
Fourth-grade room?
Yeah.
So, Oshly?
That's the one. I went in there and her rug's awful. It's, you know, I, I think, you know, I'm against rugs, you know I'm against rugs, and, you know, I've been a janitor for thirty-two years, but I am willing to compromise, get a new rug, get her a rug. You know, that's, that's just awful, you know, and Randy told me it's been taken out, pressure washed, and, you know, when the rugs look like that, give us a new rugs, and all, and I'll make, we have to make a motion, whatever, they need a new rug in there.
I don't know if we need a motion for that.
But, but I'm coming next week, we'll get her, get her what she wants, but get that one out of there.
What, I'm just curious, because we have invested, I would have to say, a small fortune in these very large area rugs, for like right here in front of the screen, for what we call close proximity mini lessons, bringing your kids in close, and then releasing them to go do their work. And, and we have spent a lot of, a lot of money, so I'm really surprised to hear that we actually have one that's not very nice. I've been worried that we spent, you know, but it's so important to me that we have these for teachers, and we get big ones. Because if you've got kids sitting down, and you've got fifteen kids or twenty sixth graders, you know, and in fact, even in the sixth grade, we don't use them because their rooms are kind of narrow, but fifth-grade teachers are using them, but we get really big ones. So, I'm surprised that with the, how, how ready we have been to give them that we've got one.
That one there is, it's as big as this one.
Okay.
But.
Alright. Well, she'll be happy to know that you are supportive of it, I'm just hoping she doesn't have a special attachment to that one.
I hope not. I hope not, I'll even help fit you in, right?
I appreciate the support, it's great.
Okay, on to Business Report.
I think we're starting with warrants?
Yes, sorry, check warrants.
Sure, I think Steve has the warrants for September.
Oh, no, I gave them up.
He gave them. No, right there, that small stack in front of me, I think that's.
No, that's my agenda, they're in there. Should've been right on top.
Yeah, there you go.
There you go, Lisa.
Whatever.
Alright, here, I'm not the finance manager, I'm not, I'm not qualified.
Well, I'm sure you're qualified. Do you want me to make the motion?
No, you just have to read the numbers, and then we'll accept a motion.
Three hundred ninety-two thousand, four hundred seventy-four dollars and ninety-five cents.
So I'll accept a motion to accept the check warrant. So I'll accept the motion to accept the check warrants for the month of September of three hundred and six, ninety-two thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-five cents.
A second.
Well, we need a first.
Oh, I thought you said that.
I can't.
I'll take the first.
There you go.
A second.
There we go. Uh, any discussion? Uh, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries five zero.
Okay, and then, um, you received electronically a copy of the financial report through the end of September for fiscal year nineteen. Um, not a lot has changed since your last draft. Under two-two-two-five, which is school-wide technology, you'll notice that, um, there's about fifteen thousand dollars worth of expenses that were not there in your last draft. That's, um, for the additional tech support position that's been, um, added in, in Swanton, I'm sorry, in Highgate, it's down on my end. Um, in Highgate, did you get one?
I know it was late.
You can have mine. Sorry, I didn't print, I only printed a few 'cause I wasn't sure who wanted hard copies and who wanted. But you can have this one.
That's all right.
Um, so, just under technology, it's page four, Chris. Um, that's the additional tech support position. If you remember, we had budgeted for a tech integrationist and that was not hired, um, but now there's been some, some additional tech support put in place. And then on page five, you'll notice under the twenty-three-twenty-one Office of the Superintendent, um, your special ed assessments have now been updated, um, to what we project the cost to be for this fiscal year, um, keeping in mind that those can be quite fluid. I did wanna point out on the bottom of that box in the twenty-three-twenty-one where it says IDEA B or I-D-E-A-B, um, you'll notice, uh, in the variance column all the way to the right, um, it looks to, that you're receiving about twenty-seven thousand dollars less in, in revenue, offsetting revenue, but it's actually just being net prior to the assessment happening. We're, if, you've heard me talk about, um, since the special ed revenue has been coming into the SU and all the expenses and the way that the state has been reconciling at different points in time throughout the year, um, and hasn't always been consistent, we're finding it easier to net some of those revenues out prior to the assessments being made. Otherwise, there's just so many in and outs with so many, it's, it's becoming cumbersome, so recce's decided to do that that way. You're still, you're still getting the money.
It's just off the top?
Yeah, just off the top.
I, I'm, um, I'm lagging behind here.
Okay.
I'm still back on the, the school technology.
Okay.
What, why do we need more support? Was this contracted or did we hire somebody or?
No, I can, I can, I can speak to that, we, um, uh, Ethan was, was kinda overwhelmed, I think, um, with the amount of work. You know, he's trying to fill a little bit of the role of the tech integrationist, which the position we did not follow off with, um, which is working with teachers, uh, he also works with students a lot. Um, so, you know, there's a, there's a little, there's an element here of, of, of him, um, getting out to areas of the school and doing things that a normal technology support person wouldn't do. But at the same time, um, I think we reap the rewards from that and his work with teachers. But definitely, we also knew that upcoming with the, with, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the E-rate, which will allow us to, uh, purchase a lot of the in, technology infrastructure that we're waiting to get, but we're waiting for the E-rate to kick in, which I think is in November. I know, I'm talking in an area that I'm not too overly familiar with.
E-rate typically is just, um, offsetting revenue, we've never, I don't think we've earmarked it for anything, but we could, the board could decide to do that.
Do we not get it less expensively if we wait? Is that?
I'm not sure what you mean by that.
That, that, that if we were to, uh, purchase and, uh, all these infrastructure up, upgrades that we want to, um, that, that there was a reason we didn't do it in August or the summer to get ready for the school year, that we waited until November?
I'm not sure, I'd have to watch, check with Paul, Paul Gregoire's the E-rate specialist.
That was my, that's.
Not familiar with that.
And I just, I just think it's, it's just something I've, I've heard over the years, that, not just this year, but, so anyway, we do have a lot of work coming up. At the last board meeting, we talked about looking at maybe a consultant route. Um, but a personnel situation came up where we did have somebody internally that could meet, fit this role quite well. Um, so we wanted, we thought we'd give it a try for the remainder of this year, but, um, not necessarily a position we would follow through with. Um, we wanna kinda wait and see. And since we did have the money budgeted there in the technology integrationist spot, um, we're still not coming close to what we would've spent there. Um, so, just sort of something we're gonna give a shot. We hope this allows Ethan to work with teachers a little bit more instead of just keep devices up and running.
Yep.
And this person will just, that their job will be keep everything up and running, get, help, uh, uh, help, um, install a lot of our infrastructure that we're trying to improve. Um, and I forgot the terms for them, but.
High.
In different parts of the building to increase connectivity and speed that, that are, um, very weak in white building parts and in the third grade one. So when that comes in, there's gonna be a fair amount of time put in, um, with literally just stringing cables, as we know, uh, and through ceiling tiles and things like that. So, um, just, we're not necessarily sold on this as being a two-person position. Uh, I think we'll have to talk about whether we wanna revisit the integrationist again, which is, you know, is a fully certified teacher, um, which is a kind of a big ticket item, or, or do we get enough bang for the buck with two people who probably combined don't earn or maybe come close to what one-person integration?
Still less. Still less than the integrationist by far, yeah.
Yeah. So, um, we hope that we're getting what we need and, um, and saving a little money at the same time.
Very good, I was just a little lost on that one, so, and I get it now, that's good, I like it.
Okay, yeah, that's our, that's our strategy right now, we'll see how it goes.
Yep.
I don't have much else to say about the financial report. If anybody has any questions, you're always welcome to email or give me a call if you do.
All right, if everybody else is satisfied, I am, so we can move on to draft one of FY twenty budget.
Typically, you accept the financial report if it's comfortable doing.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I'll accept the motion to accept the financial report.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Brian? Uh, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, motion carries five zero.
Thank you. So, um, you also have in front of you, just, I did not email, just a hard copy of, um, the fiscal year twenty, uh, draft one budget. Um, yes, we're there already. Um, I don't have a lot of information, so I tried to, to, um, make some moderate projections right now, um, as far as staff and benefits. Professional staff is set to negotiate, um, in the upcoming months, um, so I'm, I'm again projecting a moderate increase there, um, just for this draft purposes. Um, support staff has been negotiated for fiscal year twenty, so we know, um, that there'll be fifty cents added to the base, uh, per hour on their wage schedule, um, so that's been included in this draft. Blue Cross Blue Shield has announced, uh, VHI has announced an increase of eleven point eight percent to your Blue Cross Blue Shield, um, premiums for gold CDHP plans, which is the plan that most of your employees take. Um, so that eleven point eight percent increase has been included, um, along with your HRA costs, but those are remaining consistent depending on how negotiations, um, end up. Dental should be level funded, may actually decrease a little bit as it has in the last couple of years. Um, and that's fully funded by, um, by the district, um, but I've left that level funded for now. I've added a two and a half percent contract, um, two and a half percent increase to all contracted services, just purely for, for, even your marketing funds, at this point in time, it is very, very early, we don't even know what our contracted services are going to be for this year. Um, but I just felt like there needed to be some placeholder there. Um, also two and a half percent to the assessments to try to incorporate some funds for salary increases since, you know, eighty-five to ninety percent of your assessments is salaries and benefits. So, also, I was asked to include, um, a potential golden handshake benefit, so, um, that's outlined in the master agreement in here as well, so that is, is taken into account here also. So when you're looking at your instructional, um, programs, teacher salary lines, just note that, um, a good portion of that increase, um, is, is right now due to that.
Yep.
Lots more to come.
Hmm.
But it's a starting point at this time. I think Pat and I will be, um, setting up some times to meet over the next couple of months, um, around needs, wants, et cetera.
Now, at the SU, we were talking about this, uh, we're gonna change the way we budget for the HRA, right? Because of, now that we bent in the program, we know there's some usage change, or?
Well, um, this draft is still including eighty-eight, seventy-five percent of eighty-eight percent. So the, right now, if things don't change, um, it would be the employer's, um, liability of eighty-eight percent and I'm budgeting for seventy-five percent.
Percent of the eighty-eight.
Um, I started last year with fifty percent and, but it, last year was not a typical year, this year, so I'm, I'm hesitant. I wanna, I don't wanna be too conservative, so I've left enough. Um, and I, I can adjust it as we move through the year, um, or even as we move through the budget cycle, if I'm more comfortable right now. Too many unknowns with the, with the HRA situation being as it has been. Um, the draft said the assessments, um, so your special ed ECP and central office assessment should be going to the November meeting, the November Franklin Northwest meeting, and then I can update those numbers as well. Right now, again, I've just added a flat, small increase.
Uh, any other questions, discussion for the draft of the FY twenty budget? Okay, on to the FY nineteen, FSMC contract addendum.
Food service management company, contract addendum.
Felt like I should know that.
Yeah, you've heard it before.
Yep.
Um, Highgate, um, had to enter into a new contract this year for food service management, um, well, we do every year, but you're allowed renewals, if you remember, but this year we had to follow a, a whole cycle, um, to enter into a new contract. We had to launch an RFP, an award, and all of that. When we did that, um, we had thought that Highgate would continue with its supper program, which is the CACFP, the Child Adult Care Food Program, um, serving full meals as part of the after-school program. The reimbursement rate is much higher and it's a, actually a full reimbursable meal. Um, to do that, you have to have a forty percent free reduced price, um, percentage, um, for the prior year, or you no longer qualify and cannot participate in CACFP. You have to then go to, well, you can go to serving snacks again with a much lower reimbursement and it's a, it's a, it's a much smaller serving, obviously. Um, we found out after we awarded the contract that you had lost the eligibility for, um, CACFP, so we had to amend the contract to include snacks. Um, definitely wanna serve something, they, I believe, in the after-school program, that was a consensus. So, this is, um, an addendum to shift from CACFP to NSF, the National School Lunch Program snack. Um, at a rate, it's a fixed price, just like all your other meals now, and rather than cost reimbursable, and it would be eighty-eight cents plus a fifteen cent management fee for all after-school program snacks, is what Highgate's cost will be.
So, per, per student?
Per snack, per, per reimbursable snack, yep, yep.
So.
So David Underwood has agreed to this and they have, they have signed this from the Abbey. I'm asking the board to consider signing this, so we can, um, send it to the state.
So I would entertain a motion to allow me to sign, or the board chair to sign, the addendum for the snacks.
I'll move it.
Second.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
The only other thing I'll say is that, um, keeping in mind that if we can meet the forty percent threshold, which we may have already done this year, that there's some time that, processing that has to happen, um, we will, I believe, move back to snacks if we can, because it's much more financially, um, helpful to your hot lunch program. Just the reimbursement rate is like almost four dollars for a snack, uh, for a supper, I'm sorry. So, it's a moneymaker for the program.
So, any discussion, not any more discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, motion carries five zero. Um, facility assessment update.
Okay, I'm, here are bad news.
Yeah.
If you read your emails, but, um, this, the assessment, Cross, um, well, first of all, Cross did, uh, Terry Brays delivered plans, all the plans that we had, that were like the architectural and specs, um, have all been digitalized, digitized, however you say it. Um, and we now have electronic copies of all of those, which is wonderful for the building. Um, I have them stored electronically and backed up to the cloud, and Terry does, I believe, as well, which is just a great thing to have. Um, so Cross has done that for us, and then they did meet, move forward with a, a quote on the assessment. Um, unfortunately, the dollar figure was significantly higher than what I had anticipated. Um, I did ask for an explanation and I attached it to the back of your assessment. Um, the building is much larger than Highgate and because of the parameters and asking for this, the specificity around, um, making sure that we had the information to go to bond, um, it's, this is definitely a more comprehensive, um, assessment than what he provided in Sheldon. So I don't know if it's something that Highgate still wants to consider, I still wanted to bring the information to you.
Uh, did everybody get the emails about this? So, you know, the new number is, uh, twenty-five, twenty-five-six, I think, or something.
Twenty-five, no, it's not gonna be.
Right, so twenty-six thousand bucks to have them come in and tell us what's wrong with the building. And, and give us, um, prices and kind of a plan to go forward with.
Just to allow, i- i- it is a little bit more than that, and I just wanna make sure that you're aware of them, i- i- just so you know, wasn't included, because I thought one of the things that was really good about this, um, that I didn't ask him to include, but a preventative maintenance, it's number eight on, um, page four. Um, he would provide a preventative maintenance schedule and cost estimates that could help extend the useful life of various buildings and ground systems. A preventative maintenance cycle and process and, and schedule is a really important thing for a commercial building. Um, it's something that we haven't had in Highgate, uh, to date. And I do think that would be something that would be very beneficial, whether it's something that you contract for or, um, do internally.
So, the, here's the hard part, though, is now we have to go out to an RFP process, right, because it's over fifteen thousand?
I can informally or formally, yes. Informally doesn't necessarily involve a launch of a formal RFP solicit bids instead, um, but yes.
So, is it even possible to do, go for bids, pick who we wanna go with and then have them do all the work in time?
Solicit, yes.
It is possible.
If they, it would be very tight, but I think I could probably do it.
So, what's the feeling of the rest of the board?
Well, um, my feeling initially was, we need to do this, um, it's a little bit of insurance policy for us. But Laura, if you think you can go out and get it done, I mean, that's the key, getting it done quickly.
It's, it's a matter, I, it's not something that I'm overly familiar with. I'm limited in my experience only to RSEU with this, um, but I'm assuming that other, um, engineering firms do the same thing and they could, um, provide me a bid in somewhat timely fashion, especially since the plans have now been, um, very electronic. It's.
Is, is this about the roof or, or?
It's about the entire facility.
The entire building?
Well, not even just the building, the whole facility, including drainage, parking.
Okay. Have you worked with Visbit on this?
Um, we did pre, prior to this one, yes. They are one of the people that, um, well, we've had audits from Visbit. I'm not sure if that's what you're talking about. This is a little bit more involved than an audit that they provide. But yes, we've worked with, we, Visbit is our insurance carrier and we work with them.
Right, right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, they provide a lot of resources. This is a little more, um, involved than that.
I, I agree. I also feel that this is an insurance policy, an extremely expensive one, but an insurance policy that I have a hard time saying no to. But this is also something we didn't budget for and this is far more expensive than we were talking about two weeks ago. So, uh, I don't know.
So, that being said, I mean, we're not committing to anything. We have, I mean, we have to go out for bid.
Well, I would solicit bids. It would be an informal bid process. I do not have time to launch an RFP.
Right, right.
But yeah, um.
I mean, so we could end up with a smaller bill.
Yeah.
I'm not sure it will end up that way, but.
I, I know, but I, you know, instead, I guess what I'm getting at is instead of just committing to the first number that's in front of us.
Um, right.
What would worry me though is if, uh, you go out and solicit, say, three bids and we get two that are in the same ballpark and then we get one that's like ten grand, I'd be awful worried about. Somebody saying, no, their charge is ten grand for somebody else, somebody else says we should be in the mid twenties. So to me, whether we get three bids or not, we're gonna be in the ballpark of twenty-five thousand dollars. So... So at that point, I guess, are we willing to spend twenty-five plus on an assessment that we didn't budget for? That's the hard part. Ay, 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 ay.
I think we'd be able to justify it in the long run, especially with knowing what's wrong, having a preventative maintenance cycle.
I, I, I would feel a lot better going to a bond with the assessment.
Yeah.
I guess, I guess that's kinda where I'm at. I'm just not sure if, I don't know. I don't know.
Well, it's pretty common knowledge, just what some of the problems are here. So as far as any pushback from local, I don't, I don't see a lot of that.
Yeah, and then the, the beauty of doing this is, uh, they'll find all the things we don't know about, you know? I mean, I'm not here every day, so I don't know what the issues are every day, and then there's probably even things that people who are here every day don't know about.
I don't think it's a frivolous expense.
Right.
You know, by any means. If it were, I, I'd be the first one to say, what are you thinking?
Yeah.
Um. My, and you may not like what I'm about to say, but I'm gonna say it anyway. Um, the only other thing that I can think of, given our timeframe, would be to reach out to other facility directors who have gone through this process, um, in the last five years and see what their thoughts are. Having bonded, gone through major, major renovations that have, you know, gone across multiple years, um, looking at a lot of the areas that you're looking to address, I don't know if that would be helpful. Um, maybe even in place of something like this, uh, you're not gonna get the same information, but it's sort of like the, the minimal, the minimalist, uh, version. Um, I'm just worried about going into a bond with as many items that you outlined even being as of a concern. And then the unknowns on top of that, without some guidance and structure to that, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I agree. No, I agree with you.
Well, then we talk about that too. We take the fullest first and then we cut it back if we got to.
Yep. So I, I guess, at this point, I'm, I'm, I'm interested in, I mean, I don't wanna create more work for you for just our whim, but I do wanna see what the bids would be and what other options would be. I mean, I've had some experience with Cross in the past and I have found them to be a little on the spendy side. They do really good work, but I don't know. Um, so I would be interested to see some other bids. So I guess I would entertain a motion to, uh, allow Laura to solicit bids for, uh, uh, facility assessment.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Um, I just wanted to look at the timeline here one more time to.
And then we'll.
Include that timeline.
Discussion, then we'll do the prioritizing, right?
Hmm?
Prioritizing.
Well, this is just getting bids on what's gonna cost to do the assessment. Then we have to pick one from, you know, one of the three.
So if they first come back with what they find, then take it from there.
No, right now, all we're doing is just trying to find out how much the assessment's gonna cost. We've gotten an estimate from Cross that it's gonna be twenty-six thousand dollars. So it's well over the fifteen thousand dollar threshold, so we have to solicit, uh, more bids.
Yeah.
So that we're, you know, being competitive. And then we have to make a decision from what we get for bids.
Which I would think to help, I mean, you would likely wanna schedule another, uh, bond meeting. So if you had that in between now and your next board meeting, you may be able to, and I don't know if that, if you'll be able to get any estimates.
I, I hope, I would think I would have to, otherwise we won't have enough time. So I think I'll, if I'm looking at this proposed schedule that we're using as kind of a guide right now, he's basically starting the process on November one, and I had asked him if he could turn around the report before the end of the year. Um, and he said, yes, and he gave a date of the twenty-first, so I'm, I, I would probably need the board to meet as close to the first, but not after, to give me as much time as I can and then the other firms as much time as they can. Um, not that I'm anxious to have another meeting, I'm not sure you're not either. You're missing that page, page thirteen, are you?
Yep.
I know. Did it not double size for you guys?
No, it didn't.
All right, wow.
But the pages you're talking about are.
My copier skills apparently are flat. Look at the paper I brought with me. Sorry, I'm sorry. I take mine copies before I leave and give you.
Also, we have every other.
But the ones you've found out, we have those pages, so we're.
I've actually looked through this.
Here, take my copy, somebody.
We've got it all.
Electronically, yeah, yeah. Um, basically, that's what the time, that he did a, a nice little timeline here in thirteen.
Yeah, I, I, I did see that when I was reading through the emails.
Okay.
It was nice to see a, a plan breakdown of when we can expect stuff. All right, are we ready to vote? All those in favor of allowing Laura to solicit bids for, uh, facility assessment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Uh, motion, uh, abstentions? Motion carries four one. Ah.
Take this one so you have, I can make another.
I, I haven't.
No, you're good, okay.
We're on to old business.
Actually, I have just this letter that it kinda falls under finance and old business. Um, unfortunately, after the engineer came for the, the roof, the engineering firm from the insurance company handling our insurance, they have still denied any claim on the roof, so I think we knew that, but I just, it was worth a shot, right?
Surprise, surprise. Okay, we don't need a.
No, we don't need a motion or anything. I just dropped the correspondence.
So we're on our own with the roof, just like we thought.
Yeah.
Okay, on to old business. Act forty-six update and review of class action lawsuit. The, after our SU meeting, uh, talked with, or Bob Berger brought up at the meeting, um, that in order to join into the class action suit, you actually don't have to put any money up front like we originally thought. Um, there's, I believe there are up to seventeen or eighteen, uh, towns that have joined the law, the lawsuit. And I don't know, I was, I thought we should re-discuss it. I mean, I know we decided not to last time, but we also thought we were gonna have to financially pony up some money. As of right now, you don't have to put any money up, uh, until... I'm not entirely sure exactly when, but.
So we had this conversation Tuesday in, where am I? Sheldon. And, uh, I also spoke with our school attorney about it, because I know that the Act forty-six folks, Margaret McLean was saying, and Bob was saying, you, you can get out at any time.
Yeah.
And I wanted, and I know that the original idea was that communities sign on and then when the, uh, state board rules, if they say you don't have to merge, then you withdraw and you're not a party to it anymore. So I wanted to make sure that even if communities wanted to sign on, because, um, there was a lot of conversation about to have solidarity with Franklin, that, um, we wanted to make sure that we showed that we were supportive and make a statement, and, uh, there's an informational meeting on October fifteenth, um, not just to get information about the lawsuit, because we don't know a ton about it, but also they're looking to find out what the specific issues are in each community, so that that will be part of their argument. So the conversation is, you know, could we find out about it, sign on initially? And you don't get the information unless you sign on, right? So, um, then i- if you say, well, no, now that we're there, we don't really want to, uh, we don't know whether we'd have the financial support, because we really can't use education dollars to sue this agency of education. So we would have to have private fundraising. Now, in Franklin, um, they, they really have that support in place. And part of, I know the concern of this board was it's an undisclosed amount, you know, we have some hesitation about it. Our attorney said, if you wanna sign on to any litigation of any kind, and then you change your mind and you wanna withdraw, you can do that without any trouble. So I felt like he was really confirming what they were saying.
Yeah.
That if this board wants to, um, sign on for any reason, whether they wanna be all in, whether they wanna sign on, on to be supportive and get some information, uh, and then decide later when the secretary's report or the state board's report comes out, if you wanna decide then, I'm not sure, you know, if you're not sure. Um, it, it's pretty low risk if you wanna make a motion to do it now. Let's.
Thoughts?
I don't think we should go all in yet. It was just go in to get the info and see.
That's kinda where I'm at. I, I, one is, I think it shows that we're trying to support what we've been, I don't wanna say fighting against, but we've been fighting against for two years. And, um, I also think it sends a message, you know, the more communities that sign on to this class action suit, it sends a message to the state. And at this point, we're financially, we're not liable for anything, so. And we get the info if we sign.
You're supporting your neighbors and, but my question is, when do we know that it's time to pull out? How do we know?
The suit gets filed after the state board makes its recommendations. Now, we don't know if they're going to do the whole state at once, or if they're gonna do it in waves, right? It all has to be done by November thirtieth. So there's still some question there, I, I, bless you, thank you.
I think that, um, the informational meeting on, on the fifteenth for, for board members that, that attend, I think that might be a question for the group of attorneys. Um, I don't have a strict, a, a strict answer. Obviously, the longer you're in the litigation, the more that you're responsible.
I know which, what did Sheldon make for a motion? They, they, they said that they were, they were signing on and would reconsider at their next meeting. Um, I think that was how they were wording it.
I like that, so we, we keep, yeah, I like that.
I have updates by then.
Yep. So I'll entertain a motion to, uh, join the class action suit and I would say evaluate each board meeting.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Discussion. Uh, all those in favor of joining the class action shoot, suit, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries four zero.
Four one.
Four one, sorry. Been a long day. Uh, bus updates.
One note, you probably noticed Marshall in, um, in the audience in the beginning, but, um, we, we had anticipated that a parent might come and talk about some concerns and he really wanted to be here to, um, address a parent, but, um, the parent is not here, so, um, uh, he decided to just, uh, head home, that we could give the updates. Um, the dismissal seems to be working fine. Um, I, you know, our buses were all out of here by three o'clock now. So, um, the logistics of, of those things are fine. We're, 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 we're talking about a different way to dismiss students that we think will be even better. Um, kinda just all down one hallway and across and dropping kids off and avoiding lining, even lining up to begin with. Just a continuous motion loop, which I think is what Chris has thought, uh, happens at Swanton School. Um, we, we do have a tendency, we have, we line up and, and that does slow things down even more. So we think we can even get a little bit more efficient that way. However, that's not really the main, what the main concern was, uh, about, um, you know, an incident that, well, we thought a parent might be coming today and, uh, and that was about students getting on buses that they shouldn't get on and getting off at homes that are, that don't have adults there. So, um, uh, we have taken the step, immediately after that incident, we did take the step that any student that voices any indication that they are not to get on that particular bus that day will not be put on the bus. It will be brought inside.
Yes.
We'll try to contact home as quickly as possible to see if we can get them, to see if they were right, the student was right or wrong. In this particular case, it was a young girl who, um, we followed what we thought was the adults' plan, even though the student knew that that was not the right plan, uh, we did. And so, you know, the student boarded the bus and, um, and that led to a, a, you know, potentially dangerous situation, which was thankfully averted. Um, I met with the parents and, um, certainly they felt relieved that we embraced their suggestion immediately that we will not, if a student says that's not the bus they're supposed to ride today, um, that we listen to them, bring them in and try to call, and if we can't call, then we keep them here until we can reach somebody and arrange for transportation. Today, we had a student who missed the bus. It wasn't the wrong bus or that kinda situation, but, you know, two of us ended up driving the student home with parent permission. So, um, we actually have also now, I've made the recent shift of one parent educator's schedule to come in a little bit later each morning, uh, and to stay later. So if we do have a student that, um, does need supervision after school while we figure out a bus situation, we have a parent educator that now can stay later according to their schedule. Um, with respect to the bus company, you know, the bus company does a very, you know, they're, they're, they are a good bus company. And, um, there's never gonna be a perfect system where, you know, there's a certain age at which, distance to the house and the, the eye contact with an adult and there's all kinds of factors, um, that go into that. And, uh, we all wish we could do door-to-door service for every child, but that's not actually possible, um, within time constraints, money constraints. So there are situations where, um, you know, students do get off, but if they're with an older sibling, a fifth or sixth grader, um, you know, we assume they're gonna be fine. Uh, if it's a young child getting off alone, that, um, bus drivers often will, if they don't. If it's a young child getting off alone, that bus drivers often will, if they don't see an adult. Or make that eye contact or wave, or somebody will turn around and bring this and do their route and bring the student back home. So there's not too many things that we would want to change from what we currently practice with the bus company. They do, they do know their kids and constituents well, especially families that have been with them for, for many years. But there's, there's always that possibility that, you know, those things can happen, so. But I think we're made some adjustments and just reemphasize to bus drivers that. You know, with young children getting off alone, that they can't pull away until there's some. You know, you watch them go in the house or you make eye contact with the, the parent. And it's hard to set an age at that because, you know, there's some third graders that are more mature about it than some fifth graders. But typically, the, it's really about whether or not they're alone and how far they are from the house and can you see the house from the road? All kinds of factors, but we, we feel pretty good on our bus company. Marshall was here because he felt partially responsible for what happened. And it really was kind of a, an unfortunate combination of bad events, all converging. To use the overused phrase of a perfect storm, but that's kind of what happened that night. A lot of things didn't work out the way they normally would have, and if any one of them had changed. We wouldn't have been in a bad situation, but all of them, all the, the negative boxes got checked that day. So anyway, so he was here to just. Represent his bus company, recognize that they made an error that day also. And that they also are going to be more. Kind of on top of things about making sure that kids aren't left without knowing that they can get into a home or an adult's there.
I know the parent, it was very important, one of the reasons why we talked is they, they wanted to, one, make sure they were appreciative of administration. The, the, the meeting that you had and how we were all so very upset that it occurred.
Yeah.
And took responsibility in the bus as well, right? So, and the fact that he, they wanted to make sure it didn't happen again and they wanted us to have a procedure to make a change. And there was just no question that it was a good idea and that we, we don't want it to happen again. And it makes a lot of sense to just listen to the children and if it's a mistake, we're erring on the side of caution.
Yeah, we'll probably take far more heat from the parents who said, why didn't you follow the plan? We told you to and not listen to our five-year-old. But in light of what happened, we were prepared to explain that and we had the permission of the parents to share that story.
Yeah.
Of, of what happened, you know, on a day that we didn't believe a six-year-old. And so I think that should be enough to ease the concerns that any parents would have.
So do we have, because of this, are we going to have, not a policy, but a procedure in play? Because you said you basically have, do we have it written down?
Yeah, so it's written down and sent out to every parent educator and staff member in our school.
So I'll say that, that just gives us something we can show parents too, that they call and upset that you, we follow, you know, we have a procedure, we're following. Awesome.
And especially in the winter also. We've got the whole temperature thing and getting into a house as well. So there's a whole added degree and layer of, of safety that needs to come into play.
Will you be notifying all parents of this change in policy before much time goes by? I mean, I'm just thinking because parents are, it might be nice for them to know ahead of time that an event happened. And that because of that, the policy is changing so that when they get frustrated, they already know like, oh, something happened and they changed the policy. And my kid didn't understand it, but they already have that in the back of their mind?
You know, we, we didn't only because it was sort of internal at that point.
Well, I mean, go ahead forward.
Yeah. Yeah, I think especially with the winter that we could probably put out what the practice is. Because even in, even in this case, this family, once the child would have gotten into the home. That the child was supposed to go to, they have it all laid out, you know, if nobody's here, this is what you do. So really the key is getting into the home. So not a bad idea to update people, certainly with winter coming. Thank you.
Okay, on to Velco easement update.
So you had asked me to have the attorneys go over the easement agreement. And they did, and the first thing they advised me is that if you are purchasing more land or selling your land, which is what an easement is doing. That you need to go before the voters. And I said, but they were very clear that it wasn't an increase in the land, in the space. That it was really about greater capacity of different kinds of cable that's going out there. And he's, he is verifying that. I spoke with. Rob, who was here last time, and he's, he assured me that, yes, it is not an increase in the actual property lot size. But when you look at the old sixties agreement and the newer proposal, the, the, it's not the same, it's not surveyed. So part of what they would do for us is survey it, but he assured me it is the same. And I said, great, you folks and the attorney need to get together. And there's also language in there around spraying chemicals and burning, which I know is. Something that we don't want to have in schools. And I know that there are ways around that, so we just wanted to make sure that clarification happened. Nobody wants chemicals being sprayed on foliage and where children play. So if we have both those things cleared up, I see no reason why the board wouldn't want to be looking at this in your November meeting. And ready to sign it. And I gave him the contact information, so that should be expedited.
Okay. Election Day update.
So Julie and I talked and we reached out to the teachers' associations. They did, they did have not a concern, but just probably more of a point. That, that if the students weren't here, then we were treating it as an in-service day, that we had already. Scheduled all of our in-service days and this would be an additional in-service day. And so they're actually meeting tomorrow morning to vote on this. I have assurances from the, the association leadership that they're anticipating nothing but full support for this. That this is, they support the move for school safety. They support the fact that they're here to get some training, additional training opportunities, so. But it was a formality that we needed to, that I had not thought of, Julie, Julie had, and, and I think she had great foresight. That it could have been brought up later, that we'd already used all our in-service days and counting this one in November. So having their approval will be fine and, and we're ready to send the message home tomorrow via seesaw. Facebook, email, et cetera, that, that we'll be doing this. And I will also add, just in the PTKO meeting the other night. And other parents that have, either would work at central office who might know other, have heard what's happening. There's a lot of support for this. They, they, they get it, a lot of people in the building, not something they want. And they, they, they saw, they were quite relieved and thought it was a good move. So I don't, I think it's a win-win situation all the way around. But tomorrow mor-, so tomorrow morning, first thing, the association's meeting, just to approve it. And then we'll put word out on our Friday electronic. By electronic means tomorrow morning.
Okay.
So parents will have almost a month's notice about. So we hope that's enough.
Okay. Very good.
Okay.
On to, are we done with a little business? Okay, we're on to superintendent's report.
Okay, so I hope you saw the newsletter, many of you saw it in my, sorry, I was knocking, knocking things over there. At the Franklin Northwest meeting and the administrators were able to give an update in person. Things that I want to highlight, I think. Again, for those of you that I weren't at the SU meeting, we had a meeting, superintendents met together in the end of September. And met with Secretary Dan French. And he really spoke about his restructuring of the agency of education to make it be more responsive. He gave a lot of illustrations of folks, too many project managers, but nobody actually managing the projects. That people were not always answerable to just one person, but sometimes to multiple people for different aspects of their job. And that he's working to restructure it to be more efficient. And he also spoke pretty meaning, you know, from the heart about. The fact that the agency has a long history of having sort of superficial input from the field and the communities. Instead of real meaningful feedback from, oftentimes, and I've been in this place. There's some sort of project that they have to do and they realize, oh, I gotta get feedback. And so they call you to see if you're free to come to a meeting where they tell you what they're going to do and ask you to sign off on. So those kinds of practices, he's really looking to change and to see if they can have better communication. So I thought that was very positive. I think he's somebody who is a strong administrator and will likely work to. Ensure that the agency of ed has better outcomes, I think. I know one of the things that we had highlighted in our curriculum director section of the report was the integrated field reviews. And I talked about it last month. That as part of our school improvement and, and the way that the state is going to assess the, the quality of our schools. Is having these collegial teams go visit each other's school districts. And we would be looking at quantitative information and qualitative information and, and give feedback and do a report. We, two weeks ago, on, I think it was twenty-fifth of September, a number of us on that team went for a day-long training. In St. Albans with agency of ed folks. There were people from Franklin Northeast, Maple Run and Milton also were there. And we were given our tasks, we were assigned to where we were going, schools were starting to plan for the events. Maple Run was supposed to have their, their visit this week. And we got an email last week saying they're canceling. And apparently they, we talked about the limited capacity at the agency of ed, multiple people there have illnesses and they're canceling it. They may be postponing to the spring. Kosha called them right away and gave them feedback that spring is terrible. That we have a lot of assessment that's happening in our schools. And having visiting teams of people come and interview teachers and students and families at that time would be a bit disruptive. So I have no idea about the future of this. I do know that Chittney County has a group that'll be going through this in the winter, but I, I don't know. It's unfortunate because a lot of our teachers spent a day out of the building. A lot of people were preparing, a lot of administrators were planning the events. And contacting families and then had to cancel, so I found that to be very unfortunate. Those were my two big updates. I also wanted to make sure that I asked you all about the Vermont. Education Health Initiative Annual Meeting. Some of you have heard me do this before at the SU meeting. There's, there's a, a meeting. Last month, I talked about the School Board Association meeting that's happening in Lake Maury. As part of that, they have the V-HI, it has a meeting on the Friday morning. And the school districts, each district has been appointing me to be the authorized person in case there's anything. There isn't anything scheduled as a big ticket item on the vote, but it's information. And if the board wishes to, you could appoint me to be, to represent you there at the meeting if, if something came up. Nothing's expected.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Richard.
Unless somebody else wants to do it.
I will be there, so I don't know that anybody wants to drive there for eight in the morning.
So I got a first and a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of allowing the superintendent to represent Highgate at the vote for V-HI signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries five zero.
All right, I'll go. Thank you.
Okay, on to new business. We have a little bit of, just a little quick action we need to do. Last meeting, which was a special meeting, Richard stated that he didn't want to, or wanted to step down for representing the SU, Highgate at the SU. Steve stepped up and is now going to represent for Highgate in Richard's spot, but we need a formal motion to make all this official.
I'll make that motion.
So Ryan makes a motion to accept everything I just said. Need a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
It's official now.
It's official.
Should I be your extension now?
You can agree to go.
I already went.
Yeah.
Okay, and then we have a board member who is going to resign, responding on resigning. Ryan has a, a good opportunity for a career advancement. Unfortunately, it moves him out of the state, so it'll be kind of hard to represent Highgate if he's not living here.
I started traveling earlier. I'm flying back, it's quick.
So I believe this is your last meeting, right?
Yes, but I can be available until I move. If they don't, I don't know how to find someone else, so.
Well, that's the next thing, next steps.
So. I'm sorry. What you really need to do is appoint someone. And typically what, well, and what Paret told me to do, is that we should post the vacancy. And you really should do it within about a month, you don't want it to lay. So it would make sense to have an interview of any interested candidates. If there's one, interview the one. If there's three, interview the three in executive session and then have a discussion and then make that appointment. And that person couldn't vote that night, they'd have to go get sworn in, but that is generally the process.
So that would only go till March, right?
Yes, exactly. And then they would need to be put on the ballot if everything stays the same in our school district. That would be the process.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Get the word out.
Now, we need a motion to accept his resignation too, right?
You probably should.
So first, I'll entertain a motion to accept Ryan's.
He's still moving.
Accept Ryan's resignation.
I'll move it, not happily.
Yeah, that's kind of where I'm at too.
Regrettably.
And I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I love standing so.
So what's that, three, one, one?
Yeah.
It still passes.
Are you seriously no?
Nobody.
So what are you, yes or no?
Oh, no.
All right, so three, one, one. That's weird.
That's beautiful.
Okay, so I guess another agenda topic for next me, next month is to interview anybody that wants to join this board. anybody that wants to join this board.
I actually have somebody in mind, I talked to them today. So what is the process for?
So they usually send a resume of some sort to Julie, I only know this because this has happened to me. So they would send a resume to Julie to share with us. And um and yes, then we would.
And then do we review the resumes and then invite them or notify them that?
Wait, you can introduce that?
So if you had twenty people and you were sorting through and you were making decisions, that might be the process.
Wow, I'm impressed, we had twenty people.
If you have, if you have, if you have three, you're just, you're very lucky and you probably would interview all three. Unless, unless there is someone that was, you know, for some reason, there's a conflict of interest, it's important to note that you need to uh that the um you can't be an employee of the school district. I think that's really the only one, that's about, I mean, sometimes folks.
You have to be a resident.
And you have to be a resident of the community.
Yeah, we should still post.
Yes.
The vacancy.
I agree.
Yeah, we'll do that, and when Purret comes back, we'll talk about where the best place to do that is.
Okay. Uh one last little thing that we didn't do is schedule a special board meeting for accepting or reviewing uh assessment bids.
Okay.
Or coming up with a Plan B.
Or coming up with a Plan B. So.
I guess it'll be dependent on when Laura gets it, right?
Well, I'd like to schedule it now, I guess kinda give her a deadline to work towards, um because if we.
Always a good idea for us.
Well, that, I I know personally, I do better with deadlines than if you just give me an open-ended, so.
Well, I think i- if it's going by the timeline, it needs to be before the first, so if we can.
How about the twenty-fifth, that's uh two weeks from today.
We have something else, the twenty, Act forty-six meeting. No, the fifteenth.
Right, and that, I don't know, that may just be the board chair or a representative going for that.
When's the MBU meeting, the twenty-fifth?
MBU meeting is the twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Because we thought that integrated field review thing was gonna be on the twenty-fifth. So we we moved it to the, and and some folks couldn't make the.
Right, and there was something going on there, concert.
That was it, that was it, with the concert.
So I've got two, I got two yeses for the twenty-fifth, I can do the twenty-fifth.
Am I resigned as of tonight, or can I set the thirty-first as a date?
We can do the thirty-first as the date, so you can attend.
Twenty-fifth works.
So we'll add that to that motion that I fur- that was three-one-one is that his official date was the thirty-first of October. Happy Halloween. Um so the twenty-fifth, say seven o'clock here.
Yep.
It should, hopefully should be a fairly quick meeting, I mean.
You said seven?
Yeah. Or does people want earlier?
What works for the board.
Seven is fine for me. Yeah, seven's fine.
Seven, seven o'clock here, the twenty-fifth of October. Okay. I believe we are, I believe we're done, cause I don't think we have anything for executive session, do we?
I do not.
I don't either, so. Wow, how about uh unless anybody has something to add?
Well done.
Going once, going twice.
All right, we're uh.
Well done.
A motion to adjourn.
At eight-thirty-four?
At eight-thirty-four.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Ryan, all right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.